I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you would stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Welcome everyone and welcome everyone who's watching from home. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Present.
Trustee Gat.
Present.
Trustee Kazam.
Present.
Trustee Reichert.
Present.
Trustee Wigginton.
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Present.
So I would ask for a motion to permit trustee Kazam to participate remotely.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion?
And just let the record reflect she's away on business. That's the grounds.
All right. Any discussion?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Stephanie or Beth.
Trustee Kazam, are you there? You're away on business?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
All right. Madam Clerk, call the roll on that.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gat.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Reichert.
Aye.
She's supposed to abstain. Attorney Walton is...
I don't think she should vote.
Okay. I'll put you down first.
I'm sorry, I was just about to say that. I should have abstained.
Okay. Trustee Reichert.
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, that passes and trustee Kazam is allowed to participate remotely. Next is approval of the Board of Trustees' minutes from September 17th, 2024. It asks for a motion to approve the minutes. I make a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
There is. Any questions or corrections to the minutes? Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We do have some correspondence. I'd like the clerk to read, please.
Yes, the board might be familiar with this. I emailed this to you earlier and it is very lengthy. I will read a portion of this. This is from Kathy Stevenson. Dear Mayor and trustees, I am unable to attend the trustee meeting but felt compelled to urge you to deny the site plan for the proposed parking lot along Prospect. As a former member of the ZBA for 10 years who was instrumental in initiating changes to our zoning code intended to preserve the Village of Peoria Heights business district, it is clear the approval of this plan would be detrimental to the Village of Peoria Heights on many levels. As a longtime ZBA member, I have been in your shoes many times for recent large developments and fully understand the uncomfortable position you are in. However, your job is to vote on what is in the best interest of the village and not the individual business owner or resident. There are always unintended consequences to every decision and while I applaud the petitioner for their efforts to enhance the parking lot with landscaping, that doesn't change the impact this land use has on our community's future development and the implementation of both short and long-term plans. A census to say Treskers is not a huge asset to the Heights and vice versa, which is the reason Peoria Heights provided a $1.6 million TIF loan to Treskers representing 39% of the estimated $4.1 million project. The petitioner purchased the property knowing there was a building in front of it and the available parking. The village has made its intention for the property very clear. In 2016, the village purchased the former Gray Boy Kawasaki property, a budding prospect with the sole purpose of maintaining it as commercial property to extend our business district. The property was later sold to the KDB Group in 2019 with the sole intention they would develop it as mixed-use property, helping to fill our housing gap and extend our business district. Unfortunately, along with the failed redevelopment by KDB Group of Herschel's, the Pom House, Save-A-Lot, and Prospect Mall/Atrium Hotel, the mixed-use development fell by the wayside and has left us with this devastating proposal for its use after the sale of the property to the petitioner. hindsight is 2020. It's unfortunate the Village of Peoria Heights did not tie the sale to KDB Group to a specific development date that if not met, the property would revert back to the village or at minimum a right of first refusal of the purchase price. Below are the finding effects for the ZBA site plan approval along corresponding justification for why the site plan should be denied. These are the criteria that should be used to approve a plan. If one fails, the entire plan fails. At this point, the correspondence reads the seven points of the findings of fact and finds several failures, which are in the board's packets. She continues, "As stated, Peoria Heights has made it very clear what its intentions were for this property. From the initial purpose in 2016 to the sale to the KDB Group in 2019, the sole purpose has always been to maintain it as a commercial property to extend our business district and the sales tax base. A parking lot will break the street wall up even further, inhibit pedestrian traffic, and prevent the successful extenuation of our commercial corridor. Combined, these initiatives would bring valuable sales tax revenue into our village to offset the growing cost of our declining infrastructure and expanded village services, i.e. fire department. Despite our high real estate taxes, currently less than 20 cents of each real estate tax dollar you pay goes to the Village of Peoria Heights, hence the importance of generating more sales tax by extending our commercial corridor." The summary is as follows. This sentiment was reinforced by Strong Towns founders Charles Marone in 2018, meeting sponsored by the Tri-County Planning Commission ironically in the Treskers event space. Strong Towns is a movement to help create vibrant and financially sustainable downtowns. During the visit, Charles commented specifically on the property along with many others during a bus ride throughout Peoria Heights to review current and future development ideas. Most vibrant downtowns with lots of foot traffic do not have parking lots on their main thoroughfaux that break up the sidewalks to cheering foot traffic. Very few people utilize the existing sidewalk south of Marietta that are riddled with sidewalk breaks from newer developments. If you think about the towns you love, whether large or small, they may not have on-street parking, but they certainly do not have parking lots fronting their primary business district. Notwithstanding my respect and patronage of Treskers, I strongly urge you to deny the site plan as it will be detrimental to the future development of Peoria Heights, affecting all residents and business owners, not just one. In the recent Form-Based Code meeting, the ZBA chairman stated that when he makes decisions on the ZBA, he thinks about the impact of the decisions five and 10 years out. Approval of this site plan is not good for the village in one, five, or more than 10 years. Unfortunately, the ills of poor development decision, whether it be land use or building design, are too expensive to correct by future property owners and therefore traditionally leave their mark on our community in perpetuity. Respectfully, Kathy Stevenson."
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Any other correspondence?
That is it. Thank you.
Okay, we've got comments from the audience on agenda items only. If anyone is here tonight to address the board, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes. Anyone here tonight on agenda items? Going once, twice. Comments from the audience are closed. Next, we have a presentation on the active transportation plan. Director Aldridge?
Thank you.
You want to cut this up?
Yeah, we've got it pulled up. Excellent. So if all the technology works, and we expect it will, we have Jim Klein here. Jim is with Lardner Klein Associates and their landscape architects that have been secured by the village and regional planning, really, because this project is being sponsored through a grant that we got from regional planning. So we're happy to have Jim with us. We've had several public meetings, steering committee meetings so far on the plan, and this is really kind of a briefing for the trustees on the active transportation plan and maybe kind of give you some ideas of what we're thinking of next steps forward. There will be a public meeting on October 22nd here to get more input from the community. So, and I also like to recognize, I think, the Heedners and Jay Gruber in the audience both have had some participation on the active transportation plan, so thank them for that. So without saying anything else, if everything works, so again, Jim Klein with Lardner Klein. Jim?
Yeah, I guess that's my clue to jump in. Hopefully you can all hear me.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. That was the pregnant pause there. So thank you very much for providing time so we can update you on the status of the active transportation plan. We're about two-thirds of the way through the process with the first draft of the overall goals and project list that we sent out to you in your packet. We're, as Wayne said, we're coming up to a public meeting in about three weeks, and I just want to go over some of the initial goals and the project list with you this evening. Just to remind you about what active transportation is, it's the movement of people or goods using mostly non-managed means based around human physical activity. And you can see from the slide on the right that might involve mobility-assisted devices for those of us that are aging or needing help getting around as they move around the The sources of information from our, over the last several months, to develop this draft, this did goals, involved looking at your comprehensive plans and policies. We have a planning committee tour of the village. We have a public meeting on June 27th. We did that some questionnaires and sure we responded to before and after the public meeting. And then we have analyzed the existing condition and use data that we have been able to collect on the project area. The data that we have collected kind of involves looking at the destinations, where people want to go, the conditions that they're faced with when they try to get there without a car, and the barriers that maybe limit their ability to get to most places from one to the other or enjoy that experience if they're recreating. Based on all this information, we have kind of some elements of a vision, and the vision kind of evolved as the plan moves forward, but the common themes involve those that you see there. It's really get ways that people could get from one place to another without a car, or they can enjoy recreating, walking or riding for enjoyment, and that you might also attract visitors and trail units from around the region to your nearby businesses. Some of the most key common themes. We've organized the kind of ideas so far into six overall goals that include the ones you see there. I'll kind of go through the six goals in the next few slides. Always one of the first items in an active transportation plan is to look at ways to remove barriers that prevent people from, all ages and abilities, from using active transportation. Some of those barriers are small, like a gutter or a curb, and others might be larger barriers that are missing crosswalks or curb ramps and things that prohibit people from even getting across the street. As we move through our planning effort, we'll be sure to include ideas that are both kind of short-term or quick-build items that you can do with less investments and then longer-term projects that you could do as part of bigger projects. Like you see the raised crosswalk, one way to get across the street and bring cars up to the level of the pedestrian rather than vice versa. Many, many different barriers, as you saw, maybe from the project list, the list will continue to grow, whether it's a rough sidewalk or curb ramps, other things. So you'll need to find a way to kind of prioritize improvements over time and implement them over time. The map here shows the kind of clusters of destinations, mostly along the business district, and moving out Glen toward the school district property and the other schools to the south along Division and Lake, and then also Grandview Drive. And so those kinds of, that might be one way to begin to prioritize future improvements that are built out over time. The second sort of goal involves connectivity, and that's really one of the more important and most commonly raised issues of being able to get from one place to the other in a safe and inviting way, using any of the variety of modes of active transportation. The town has an existing system network that's well, is used pretty well, and someone would use it more if it were well interconnected. The village. This particular map shows the first view of kind of new trails and sidewalks that could be built out over time. Neighborhoods, able to have neighborhoods identified in Peoria Heights, and we've made an attempt to kind of look at the districts or combine characteristics that form neighborhoods, and you can sort of see where new sidewalks would be needed to connect some of the streets to each other, to the desired destinations, and to the Rock Island Greenway Trail. You see the five pilot sites identified on this map as well. We'll show some more detailed examples and develop these further as the project moves along, but those five concepts I'll be referring to on the remaining slides. One of the first issues that has raised quite a lot is the bearer of the Illinois River Bluff and trying to get up and down from the neighborhoods below the bluff and above the bluff. There's the kind of plan that shows various choices that you've tried to implement over time. We've identified one more and trying to point on this. Maybe I can do that. Well, number one here, enough on the map is a cushion that might go up from Dilpho Park to Grandview Drive, and you can see on the upper left, it's a kind of contour landform that could be followed along parallel to those slopes to get up to that height, and that would be a new way maybe for people to walk up and down between the bluff along the bluff. Another, other ideas that have been suggested in the past include Roosevelt Road, right away, or Gardner going up to Forest Park Drive. And then many people dreamed, I guess, of restoring the former Gibson Path as a way, number two there, to get to Fresca Park from Grandview Drive. Parallel to the river is also another important set of connections, and you're working hard on that now with the Illinois 29 project and IDOT, including a trail in that proposal. There's also opportunities on extending pathways along the Illinois River, both north and south of Poplar Lane, number one, two on this slide, or also from Dilpho Park over toward Oris Park. Could be a low bluff trail that would follow along the base of the hill and serve some nearby residents and businesses. Of course, getting across Illinois 29 is a challenge and will continue to be, and the discussions are continuing to take place with IDOT. And one of our pilot projects will look at the crossing either Poplar Lane or Lennox Street just north of there, to find a way to kind of create medians or more protected ways for people to get across the street. See in the lower left sort of a way that could take the, create medians in the middle with planted medians, which would also help slow traffic down. Another connection point is also from Len Avenue area from the school district property over to the Rock Island Greenway Trail. There's an old railroad spur back there in the Stream Valley. You can see a purple line through the middle. Oops. I'm sorry. There you go. That will create that connection. And then use the concept of complete streets, another goal, which is involves reallocating the kind of use of wider streets that may not need all that space for all users instead of just cars. In front of Glen Avenue, in front of the Peoria School District property on Glen Avenue would be a great pilot demonstration to show how to do that. The picture on the lower left kind of shows how a lane in the middle, a similar turn lane, a continuous turn lane could be reshaped with a median and some small trees. Or on the section above, you could have a wider median and maybe bigger trees that would be able to be planted in that area. The bike lanes could be part of that in the lower left, or multi-use paths off the school side of Glen Avenue could also provide bicycle pedestrian facilities. We'll look at that in more detail as we move forward with the effort. Another concept and goal would be the use of slow streets, and these are, I might have heard the concept during COVID from where people wanting to get out and recreate on the down streets, use some of the open space available to them. That concept still works today, and it works especially, it could be especially beneficial for connecting to the Rock Island Greenway Trail in places identified above, and also vice versa, connecting the trail to the business district and not to items that's wanted to be on San Diego and Durye. Around schools, the concept could also be used to slow traffic down, as shown on at Lake and up. And then behind Paris, behind War Veterans Memorial Drive, the concept could also be applied to provide a kind of a walking experience than you would on the highly, high-traffic volume of the War Veterans Drive. That could be implemented, the slow street concept, either in a quick-build way, like the signs and posts showing up above, that could be done, and we even did test out the concept, and later those slow streets could be implemented through improvements like the chicane on the lower left or the mini roundabout on the lower right. At intersections, there are also a challenging effort for many pedestrians and vehicles that you want, really, because there's many conflict points. The turn calming measures are used, the term turn calming, like traffic calming, is designed to get, be able to slow down as they make turns through the intersection so they see pedestrians, and that's usually done with tighter radiuses and better crosswalks and more visible crosswalks. In the short term, these types of improvements can be made with public art to reallocate some pavement from pedestrian that's in Jersey City on the left, and then made more permanent over time with improvements like you might be contemplating for your streetscape project on Prospect. Finally, the last few slides talk about creating destination places so that people have somewhere to go that's high-quality, it's convenient, it's secure for the end of the trip or the end of the destination. And this might involve things like could happen along Kingman Avenue, tower to park right behind you, which would allow you to kind of close off that street. Right now, the barrier that you see in the image on the lower right, the four arc that is accessible to all ages and abilities, it's really great for that, but you can't really get there easily if you're, you're stopped by the curb that's shown. But that can be done, you can raise up intersections or build curb extensions. You guys have been great at that. You can tell by the ages of the cars there that you've been doing curb extensions for quite some time, and they're still there. And, but the curbs themselves can be made more broad and accessible. That's on the upper right. That could be done as a quick build as well. You could paint murals on the street as a way to call attention to the street and try out ideas. Finally, the trailhead at Marietta and Rock Island Greenway Trail, the idea that people have been talking quite a lot about over the years. Already in the trailhead area, you'll see the sculpture, a mural that's there, the bus stop. So it has the makings of all the pieces of the great trailhead opportunity. Getting across trees equally is challenging in that location. So you might consider what they've done on the Indianapolis Cultural Trail, which is one of the great examples of urban trails, where they use street art and pavement changes to kind of help call attention to that intersection and create a place where the trail crosses a busy road. Public art, you know, once you've already got a great set of pieces of public art along the trail, can be haled up even to be more visible in a place like this, such as the one picture on the lower right in the Indianapolis Cultural Trail. So in a nutshell, that's the gist of the ideas that we've been talking about, that we're moving ahead with many of those. We gave you the list of overall projects in your handout that have been suggested so far, and the pilot projects are important. Hard of explaining those and will become priorities for grant applications as we move toward the future. Our public meeting is, Wayne mentioned, is three weeks away, a few weeks from tonight, and we'll provide an opportunity for people to look at these plans and drawings and make comments directly, as we had at the first public meeting, on prints on big tables, and then also provide a presentation to explain all these concepts of these to the one we just showed. And I think, Wayne, that's what I have to share. I'm a bit happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jim. Yeah, if you do have questions.
Further, I know you've got a busy night.
Yeah, we can, Jim can answer those, or if you have questions for me. If you would speak into your microphone so Jim can hear better if you do have questions.
Could you just repeat again the trail that you were saying we could compare to, the trailhead, where that was?
The last line?
Yeah.
Yeah, the Rock Island Trail as it crosses Prospect at Marietta, so there's a Sherman up there on the top center.
Yeah, but I thought you were saying we could compare it to another city.
Indianapolis.
I thought you were comparing, like, giving an example of, from another city that we could look at?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sorry, the Indianapolis Cultural Trail is really a great trail. It's been around for quite some time. It's an example, and if you just rode around that trail, you can find a lot of great ideas for how to implement some of these. Two pictures that you see on the left is from that one, on the left is street crossing and kind of making a bigger space at the corners as it crosses the street, and they used a thermoplastic imprint on the pavement. The one on the right is a public art installation that calls attention to that trail and is a great way to experience the trail through that, through other installations. You should have several already. It's great.
Thank you.
Wayne, I would suspect that having a plan like this in place helps with federal highway and IDOT, they like to see these plans in place when you're asking for more funds?
Yeah, certainly. That is very true, that we've done some work ahead of time of, ahead of a grant application. That counts for a lot. The other, you know, comments I have is funding. Some of the major projects like this, the pilot projects, we might look at the ITEP grant that we're looking for right now for 29. Safe routes to schools would be an important funding source, as well as, I think we talked about Glen Avenue before, the improvements there to be primarily through federal funds, maybe formula funds offered through regional planning. So, so there's some good funding sources for these types of things right now. I'm pretty excited about the pilot projects, a couple of them in particular, the one up here at Kingman, next to the park, just north of the park, doing some sort of slow streets or some very accessible streetscape there that really almost feels like a pedestrian area. I think that's, that's pretty exciting. Some of the trail extensions that Jim talked about are exactly what ITEP funds a lot of, those types of projects, access to schools, that type of thing. So, so very excited about this, and we'll refine these plans with our other design partners as well, the zoning, planning study, as well as Prospect Roads, and IDOT for that matter. IDOT will be informed by this. So very excited to move ahead with this project. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim.
You bet. Thank you. I'm going to end the slide show and I'm going to, thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it and look forward to hopefully seeing some of you on the 22nd.
All right, thank you. We would be at old business. Any old business come before the board.
I just have one thing, Mayor. As promised, I did meet with GFL regarding the complaints the board had in the residents about the transition from GNO to GFL. Very productive meeting. We're going to circle back around in a few weeks. They were aware of some of the complaints that I brought to them, and some were new to them. So again, very productive meeting. We're going to circle back around in a few weeks and make sure those were addressed. By the end of the week, I should have a flyer. Their PR department's working on with some direct phone numbers, so the residents will have some direct contact with them and their customer service. But I also want to stress, if you are having any trouble with them, you can still call Village Hall. We can intervene and help out. Don't get me wrong, but a lot of the residents are looking for direct numbers, so I hope, I was told I will have that by the end of week for us to post. So if you have any questions, continue to call, but I think we're working through it. They had a good explanation of some of the complaints that I've been getting, so hopefully we're working through them, and those will start to decrease as we move forward, so.
Do you know, are there any special restrictions on mattresses anymore?
The contract is the same. They take one per property. I know that we've been spoiled in the past because a lot, because when GNO was here, they would throw out quite a few things and they would just take them, so they're trying to work through that as well. They understand what the contract is, but they also understand what we're used to from GNO, so it's going to be, you know, somewhere in the middle. So I, you know, we will, and the other thing is too, in a lot of routes, they don't have room for more than one, so it's something they will come back if they have to. But again, we're working through it, and we anticipated some, some of these bumps in the road, but just not this, not this soon, not this, you know, the quantity of them. So the explanation I received, very good, good meeting, but we'll circle back around. So if you do have other complaints, or you're still getting complaints from the residents, please forward it to me in an email or call me and let me know so I can address that with. address that with them directly. But the contact, the contact by me and Mr. Shangrow has been great. So if we do have issues, you know, we, he's getting right on them, so.
And our, our trash, our mattresses that trustee Weisenberg said and things, they're going to the Peoria County landfill? Is that where GFL puts their stuff?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other old business? Okay, we admit new business. The first item is under economic and community development, trustee Kazam, it's a site approval application filed by Hugh Building LLC seeking approval of a site plan for construction of a parking lot and landscape improvements for the property located at 4408, 4414 and 4426 North Prospect Road. Trustee Kazam had asked for a motion to approve.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, back to you trustee Kazam. Go ahead.
So Mr. and Mrs. Heidner, who own Treffsker's Bakery and have for a long time, purchased the property in front of their business with the idea of adding more parking to their, to access more patrons and more sales tax for our community. They came up to Village Hall and presented their plan to Director Aldrich and myself. And we communicated to them that that right now is not in our zoning, and Director Aldrich, correct me if I'm wrong, that we would need a building along Prospect Road. And they then proceeded to buy, not proceeded, but yeah, proceeded to purchase the subway building that's along Prospect, which is also, you know, going to be part of their property. And they're presenting a plan this evening for parking and a green space along Prospect.
So it might, it might help if I provide a little bit of clarification on the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance prohibits in a long Prospect, any parking in front of, that Prospect, we call that the overlay district, if you've heard that before, that's what I'm talking about. It's not just Prospect, it's the Prospect Corridor. Prohibits parking lots in front of a building. So when they bought these lots and connected them to their, to their Treffsker's building that sits off of Prospect, that is exactly what was happening and that's what's prohibited. They've now bought the former subway building, Busted Brewing, and for that reason, if they connect those lots to the lot with the subway building, the parking is adjacent to, not in front of a building. All has to do with what, how you combine those lots. Severing them from the Treffsker's building, connecting them to the subway building achieves compliance with the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, council. You can explain that a lot better than I did. And I also wanted to say that this is also passed zoning.
Go ahead trustee Weisenberg.
That's what I was going to say. It looked like it ended past zoning without any objections.
Yeah, the ZBA only had a couple of conditions. The parking spaces to comply with that zoning rule that I just announced have to be behind the front line of the building. So that front corner closest to Prospect can't have parking any closer to Prospect than that front corner of the subway building. That's going to require a little bit of tinkering with the design, just to move. But what the other condition kind of goes along with that, and that is screening a long Prospect and the recommendation of the condition as imposed by the zoning board, three foot high brick wall along the sidewalk with planting on top of it. So those were the two conditions. And then obvious condition is they do have to take the step with the assessor to connect these two vacant lots with the subway building lot. That's perfunctory, that's just something you just ask the assessor to do.
Right. Okay. And then there's just one tax bill for that parcel, is that?
Correct. These two vacant lots would all be the same lot as the building, the subway building.
Would this be public parking or private parking for the, for just Treffsker's?
It is private.
So I see currently they're not joined on the GIS. Has that not happened yet?
It has not. It's subs, you know, subject to what we do tonight.
Tonight, okay.
So they would not be able to actually construct the parking until they've joined those lots. And that's something we've told them about.
Okay.
That's just a, an absolute requirement of the zoning.
Right. So irregardless, if they join those two properties, then there's no ordinance violation, not ordinance, zoning.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And do we typically, do we typically approve these if the zoning board signs off on it? I don't remember. I thought it only came to us if there was a complaint.
Site plans, we, I believe.
We approve site plans and a site plan is triggered anytime you want to do construction activity in, in the business zoning districts.
Okay.
So one question I had on this, Mark and Wayne, I, I think the Hughners have been really good friends of the village. I am a active patron of Treffsker's. I go for the cinnamon rolls with the raisins. They're the best. Non-raisins are not, so don't buy those. But get the raisins. But anyway, I, I wanted to, and I ran this by Wayne, and I spoke to our TIF client and associates up in Chicago on this issue, and I don't know if we've had a resolution on this or not. But my concern was in the redevelopment agreement, ordinance 2015-1456, that called for a creation of a special service tax area, ordinance 2016-1469. And in that ordinance, we created the special service area to, to basically protect the village and ultimately the taxpayers of the village of Peoria Heights in case these bonds were not able to be paid. We continually abate the bonds because we have enough tax revenue. Treffsker's does very well and we're able to abate the bonds and not pass them on to the taxpayers. But the way that special service area was, the legal description in our redevelopment agreement, as well as in that ordinance 2016-1469, states specific PIN numbers that now no longer will exist. So the legal description is calling for parcel 14-22-158-09, 1422-455-008, 1422-456-005, All of these won't exist anymore when we're referring back to this special service area. Now, what I was told by Steve Klein is relax, there's a map. But the legal description, key word, legal.
Right.
Is saying all these PIN numbers that now won't exist. So I don't want to endanger this redevelopment agreement. I don't want to endanger the special service tax area and I don't want any risk falling to the taxpayers of Peoria Heights if we're unbeknownst to us, we're fooling around with this. So is there any guarantee that we're not messing up things that could potentially blow back on the taxpayers?
I don't have that agreement in front of me, but what I can tell you trustee is that anytime you have an agreement, you know, that references PIN numbers, the common understanding is it's those PIN or parcel identifications as of the date of the agreement. If subsequent splits or combinations result in changes in those numbers, it's the lots as they existed on the date that agreement was signed, regardless of what their future parcel ID numbers and/or configurations, if you will, splits and combines might be. That would be the common understanding. I have to believe that there would be a legal description in addition to the PIN numbers that was attached to that agreement, but I don't have it in front of me, so I can't comment.
No, I mean, it references PIN numbers, southeast corner of PIN-09, thence westerly along southern line of PIN-1508-019.
Yeah, that's something that's very easily traceable. If those PIN numbers disappear, you still, you go back to 2016, look at the map, find the corners of that parcel as it existed in 2016 and you can trace it out and there would be no, I, I don't see any problem with that.
So the PINs in the ground?
Oh, no, no, no.
Did they?
Two different kinds of PIN.
Well, no, I understand. But the map that they're referencing, tho, those refer to specific metal stakes in the ground.
Yes.
That create PINs. So when they talk about a PIN number, the PIN number is referencing what, where those stakes are in the ground. Is that right?
Sometimes yes and sometimes no. I'll let you go.
Yeah, so from a surveying standpoint, a PIN is a property identification number and a PIN, you're talking about an iron pin that a surveyor sets when he does determine the property lines. So two different things, but both applicable here. But, you know, the comment I would make is there is a map and I would say, when I talked to Steve Klein, we both agreed that it might be best that the description be rewritten, you know, at this point, you know, and added to that SSA agreement.
Yeah, that was exactly what I was.
Well, hearing that council, does the, does the resolution need to be amended?
Um, I, I think that would be an appropriate condition if somebody wanted to make an amendment to rewrite the legal description in the 2016 special service area and all of the ordinances because there would have been multiple ordinances based upon the reconfiguration of the lots.
So in order to get this through and so they can get their part, we just, somebody needs to make a motion to change it like you just said?
Yeah, to condition the approval on also amending the other agreements so that all of the lot numbers line up and conform with each other.
Well, I'll make the motion for that, just like you said. I mean, I don't want to go through all that, but if we can get it, get this going and get, I think it's a good plan. I think we need to get, get on board, get going.
And trustee, I have nothing against the plan. I think the, I saw the renderings of it. It's going to be very nice. I just don't want to have any risk on the taxpayers.
I understand that, but.
Let's get that out of the way.
Make that a motion to make that adjustment. I'm more than happy to make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the amendment? This is on the amendment only. Madam clerk, call the roll.
All right, I have this as an amendment to rewrite the legal description in all ordinances relating to the Treffsker's Development Agreement based on the configuration of the lots post-development.
Yes.
Okay.
And one quick question. So does that, if we rewrite the agree, the agreement, do, do we need to get the Hughners to agree to that?
Yes. Yes, they would have to agree to the amendment.
Okay.
Would you rather have a motion to defer?
That's up to the board.
Well, you're the council. Is it necessary to defer or can't we just go ahead and go through?
We can certainly approve this with the motion that's been made. The, they can't start building the parking lot until we've met all the conditions that we talked about. And so.
All right.
Totally up to you guys.
Back to the amendment then. Any other discussion on the amendment? We still have the main motion to vote on. This is just on the amendment. Madam clerk.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gat?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reickert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Okay, back to the main motion is amended.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Chief, is there any concern about pulling, I mean, I know we pull in on like Sciota, but coming in off of Prospect now, you're going to have the driveway at Sciota, two driveways in front of this, and then immediately right after that, a driveway into the BP. As a tra, from a traffic flow standpoint, you feel comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with that. And they've had a few different events lately that have been absolutely packed in that area and we've been able to navigate through it, but I don't see any, any issue with that.
Okay. I wasn't able to make it to the zoning meeting, so this is private parking, but was any discussion had about it being used in pub, like for public events as well? Like, or is it going to be locked off, like?
No, there were, there were discussions. I don't want to speak for the Hughners, but there were discussions.
Jeff, would you, please, please come forward.
Basically, you guys are answering almost all the questions that I've already written down, so this is going to make it easier for me. But to answer your question is, that's the one thing that we have talked about since we've wanted to do this parking up there, is that this isn't going to be just private. We're not putting up gates, we're not putting up signs, we're not doing anything that is going to make it just for Treffsker's Bakery or the Trailside Event Center or Busted Brewing. You know, this can be parked by, you know, in the lot by anybody. And one of the things that we did want to encourage was, even though it's not a trailhead, we want to encourage people to, you know, park in the parking lot, enter the trail, whether they go, you know, one way or the other on the trail. And, you know, to me, that's public parking because not everybody is going to be a patron of either Busted Brewing or the bakery or whatever if they come and get on the trail right there. So, you know, like I said, it's not, we're not proposing that we put a trailhead there, but at the same time, it's already being used as kind of a semi-trailhead. So, so yeah, to answer your question, it's, it's private property, yes, but at the same time.
You're not going to have somebody.
We're not going to turn somebody away. Yeah, yeah, we're not going to, we're not going to police it.
So, I, sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay.
One of my concerns, reading, reading the letter that was written to the board today, reading you guys' proposal and everything like that, is I, I very much love your business, I love the building, I love everything around it, and it does need more parking, I totally agree. I do, I do worry about the revenue that will be lost by turning three lots into basically two parking lots and a little park in between. Have you considered the option of the main lot in the middle that is going to be greenery having some sort of an art fair or some way to bring revenue that, I mean, because I know you guys are very artistic people, known you guys for a long time. So the idea of being able to bring in special events into that area, I'm not great with geographical, how big this area is, but have you guys considered that option of a way to kind of bring a little bit of revenue to make up for that? Because I do understand both sides of it. I, I agree with the, and now that I know that you're not turning people away, it got me back on board because.
Okay.
The private parking had me a little.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, yeah. The, I'm not sure how big that green space is going to be to have an art fair or something like that, but at the same time, it will be invited, inviting to the public to be, we're going to put benches out there, we're going to have street lamps that are, you know, reminiscent of the old antique lamps that you find.
And this is all at your expense because it is your.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's, that's one of the things in the back of my notes here, which I could get to, but I don't think I really need to at this point, but is that all of this is going to be done without taxpayer money. You know, we're not asking to be in another TIF, we're not asking to, you know, for any of that. And I mean, if, if, if there is money there and somebody wants to give it to us, we're not going to turn it away, but we're not asking for any public funds in order to, in order to do this lot. It's all going to be, it's all going to be on us, if you will.
I have a couple more.
No, no, I have.
So when you do this, do you plan to redo the sidewalk at the same time since you're going to have the driveways?
Yes. Yeah, and as a matter of fact, one of the things that we've already talked about, and Wayne and I have talked about it a few times, is that the overlay district that, you know, that is happening, we want to do the park or the sidewalk wider than, obviously than what it is right now and, and make it more pedestrian friendly. But at the same time, we want to try to mirror what is going to be happening in the future. You know, so we're not, we're not doing one thing right now and you know, so we're not, we're not doing one thing right now, and then ripping it out five years from now, or three years from now, when it, you know, when we start any of the project on Prospect.
Do we know if there's any infrastructure under there that's going to have to be replaced if we do go through with?
I mean, there may be, I mean, we have to get into our plans, that's, that's where we'll have to coordinate the designs.
Yeah, because I'd hate to have you do all this and then have to tear it up for the infrastructure.
Yeah, we might leave some out of this.
Right, yeah, that is, again, that's one of the little notes that I have too, that, you know, we will comply with all of the infrastructure needs of the village, and of course, whatever, you know, is legally, you know, and it'll be above and beyond, you know, we want to try to do some pervious kind of paving, you know, down towards the bottom to where, you know, the, we know that there's going to be rainwater wash off, and having that kind of drainage is desirable at this point now, and I think it's almost mandatory, it's in mandatory in Peoria, so, so that's something that we want to do.
So, I understand you purchased the Busted Brewing Building, so.
Yes.
How long of a lease do they have?
Their actual lease is up in about a year. But I've also talked to Brian, the owner, and he has told me that they have, well, over the summer, have turned the tables, and they are now running in the black, and they love the location, and they want to stay, so they will probably sign a new lease and stay there. But that's not to say that, you know, things could happen, and if they do, then, you know, we will find a different revenue stream for that, and, and have somebody in there that's either, that draws in the same kind of business that they do, or something even better, who knows?
Okay, I mean, I'm just, this, I guess, isn't important, but I'm going to say, if this were anybody else, I would be voting no for this project. I think you have held up every agreement with the village that you have made, and I also know your care for like the environment, and I've been in your building and things like that, so I think you'll follow through with it, but I was not for a parking lot, so if it weren't for you, this would be a hard no for me.
I appreciate hearing that, thank you.
I'm on the same page as trustee DeVore, all day I've kind of been back and forth, and she and I even talked earlier today, and, I mean, you know, you guys have been longstanding in the community, and I, and I know you'll do right by the parking lot, and by, you know, Busted, or whatever business has to go in there, plus on top of what you guys have already built.
Yeah, and one of the things that, that we want to do since we now own that property also, is that we want to get rid of the barrier, the barriers that are there, and this like, you know, the little retaining wall that they've got, and their garbage dumpster area there, and make it one contiguous, smooth transition between what was existing there and what is going to be brand new. So, you know, so you won't even be able to tell that there's a new lot there, and because it's, we want to join it with the old, you know, with their old lot, we plan on milling it down, and, and then making it all, like I said, one contiguous lot, and, you know, so it, it looks like it belongs there.
So, Mr. Hubner, the idea is, are you going to keep these two parcels separate, the Trevesker's Building and the?
Yes.
So I don't want to have to redo another amendment?
No, you, you, when you were talking about that, we, I've talked extensively with Angie down at the assessor's office, and she's already, we've already worked on something that we will keep what we have right now as the Trevesker's property, which of course, it's all under Hugh Building, but that's going to be one, one parcel in itself.
That's going to be called the property, right?
Pardon me?
That's the property, the building?
Well, the Trevesker's Bakery property, there, that's, that's going to stay by itself.
Okay.
And then the, the new parking lot and Busted Brewing, that will all become one parcel, and it will be completely separate from the Trevesker's Bakery land.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, and that's exact, and that was what we had to do in order to make it, in order to not muddy the water, let's put it that way.
Yeah, it's creative, it is creative, the way it worked out, so.
Well, I kind of have to thank Mark for that, so, Mark and Wayne.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Just a quick question, do you still live in the Heights?
Yeah.
I knew, I knew the answer to that.
I grew up here in the Heights.
Yeah, I know, I know you did.
You can't miss, you can't miss the house.
I know you can't miss the house, I know, of course, but that just comes to the next point, I want to thank you for your continued investments in Peoria Heights, and I'm very happy these properties are back in local hands.
Thank you, thank you.
You pretty much own that block down there where you live, don't you, by now?
No, just one house. My daughter owns the house across the street.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll on the motion as amended.
All right, just as a reminder, the amendment to the motion was that the approval would be contingent on a rewrite of the legal description in all ordinances leading to the Trevesker's Economic Development Agreement based on the configuration of the lots. Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Trustee Kazam, anything else under economic development?
Not from me, mayor, thank you.
Wayne, anything?
We did get our grant application submitted for the Route 29 Trail Project to the state that ITEP grants, so, one thing I think, thought was particularly cool about that is we did get a letter of support from IDOT, so it's an IDOT grant, we got a letter of support from IDOT, so I thought that was cool.
That's pretty rare, isn't it?
So, yes, I think so, so fingers crossed on that grant application, and we're starting to work right now with the USCPA on that.
Was that from Karen, then, came from Karen Dvorsky?
Yes, it did, well, Kinsel Garnett, the regional engineer.
That's even better.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we would be at administration and finance, trustee DeVore, the first item is approval of the use of Village Hall and Tower Park on Saturday, November 16th, for the St. Jude 5K, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the use of Tower Park on Saturday, November 16th, for the St. Jude 5K.
Second.
Okay, go right ahead.
This is on behalf of the Peoria Notre Dame, and they have used Tower Park previously for this, they've raised quite a bit of money for St. Jude Hospitals, and they're just asking for like typical things, the use of Tower Park, and the restrooms, and things like that, on, they want to set up on Friday, and then the access to the race would be on Saturday, the 16th.
Questions? Hearing that, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is approval of a contract with Peoria County for Animal Control Services. Trustee DeVore, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the contract with Peoria County for Animal Control Services.
Second, please. All right, go ahead, trustee DeVore.
This is pretty much just a housekeeping thing, we do have to approve this, since we do not have our own animal protection, we do have an agreement with PCAPS to provide us with animal control, we have a great relationship with them, they work with PD wonderfully, nothing really major is changing, it is just to continue our agreement that we currently have.
And chief, we don't have any issues with PCAPS at all, I don't think, do we?
No, we have a good working relationship, so I recommend moving forward on the contract.
Okay, discussion, questions?
It looks like this, the fee on this is pretty much passed throughout the county, I mean, we're not paying any different rates than, say, the Bartonville or any other.
The formula's population, so, that's what they use.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Trustee DeVore, anything else under administration?
No, mayor.
Okay, we'd be miscellaneous, any miscellaneous to come before the board?
One thing, mayor, I wanted to just cite some positive feedback that the police department has received, and maybe just read this, if you don't mind, if you'll, so, there was a, there was an incident that happened, one of the crews was called, Sergeant Boyd was catching a medical emergency during a traffic stop, and basically found that this, this person that they had pulled over may have been suspected for something else, but it was actually the blood sugar problem, and had, may have been septic, so, the AMT Operations Manager, Senior Operations Manager at AMT complimented the officer, Sergeant Boyd, and this is the type of thing that I believe commonly happens, not all the time gets complimented, but this is a pretty run-of-the-mill occurrence, but correct me if I'm wrong, chief.
No, that's true, it happens more frequently than you know, but I do appreciate Chris putting that in writing, I did pass that on to Sergeant Boyd, but we have a great working relationship with AMT, both the police and fire, so again, I, I can't stress how important that relationship is, we have a lot of good communication, but I do appreciate him putting that in writing, before we could pass on to the board and the officer.
Thank you, anyone else?
I have one item, and it's regarding TIF and BDD extension to Route 29, in light of the significant city of Peoria and Peoria County investment in the TIF to help foster natural fiber welding and their expansion, I think we should really consider moving forwards as soon as possible to extend our TIF and BDD districts to Route 29, that could also help us pay for some of the amenities and lighting that we're looking at, I think there are just so many positive things that could come about because of this, and including the encouragement of residential development along Route 29, I think now is the time to begin doing that. Also, we earlier heard about the active transportation plan, and I think all of these things function very well together, it's part of our comprehensive plan, and I'd like you to think about that, and let Dustin or I know if you'd like to get going on this.
Very good point, mayor, and if you remember, Klein Associates actually started that process a couple of years ago, at least the initial phase, but it's, it's a great point, and I do agree with Mayor Phelan, it's something we should really strongly consider moving forward, and we know once that is complete down there, it'll, it'll be, it'll be a great area for the Heights, so, for development.
I like the idea of that, mayor, but as we look towards that possible expansion, and the businesses we want to attract down there, we should take great caution to the noise. I know some businesses down there have recently done some renovations and work that has created a bunch of additional noise to the neighborhoods down there, and one of the things that differentiate the blow the bluff from above the bluff is, they like the quiet, so I would, I'm nervous about attracting the wrong kind of businesses, that would ruin the peace and quiet and the tranquility that exists below the hill.
Well, I would, my opinion would be, and I don't know what councilor Director Aldridge would say, but I believe that would give us more control over the types of businesses than less control, but another thing is, as we prepare for construction of Route 29, I think we could actively talk with businesses, potential businesses, and developers for that site, because I believe that would be the time to start construction, once the road is being done and putting in the infrastructure, so, Wayne, do you have any thoughts?
The one thing I'd add, and yes, I agree with that, mayor, is with the zoning code rewrite, there's an opportunity to look at that area specifically, it'll be its own separate neighborhood, probably, in the zoning code.
And that's with the grant money from Senator Kayler?
Yes, yeah, so, so when that comes up, that, that's a good idea to relook at zoning and, and see if, if there's anything we can implement with that, as well as redevelopment agreements through.
So I would ask you, trustee Weisenberg, to get active when we begin that exercise, and making sure that we do a good job and complete a project.
Well, mayor, and I, I think this is, the time is absolutely of the essence here, and I appreciate you bringing this up, because we already see our, our neighbors in Peoria have already established a TIF district, they are actively doing a small industrial park right outside the boundaries of Peoria Heights, and I think it is important that we get on this ASAP, and I, I do think, and I agree with you, trustee Weisenberg, that regulating, you know, what, or putting a stamp on kind of what we'd like to see develop there, I think, as we found out tonight, a site plan for a parking lot has to come through the village board, so, I, I think that having a TIF district could really incentivize some, some positive stuff, and every redevelopment agreement has to come in front of us as well, so, I mean, if you're looking for a consensus, I.
I get, yes, let's, if anyone objects, I guess I would ask for objections, and if not, we'll prepare a resolution.
No objection.
I would just like to say something, I completely agree with going forward with this, this is something we've been considering for some time, and it allows us to look more pointedly at that area of our community, and I think we can really incentivize a lot of positivity in that area.
And Wayne, we could use the success of adjacent TIF districts to help out that one, get going, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, I don't see anything, talking to Steve Klein, anything that will hold us back on this, yeah, so, we'll proceed if that's your wishes.
Put one more thing on your plate, if that's okay.
And that's, and to your point, Mike, you're saying, and just correct me if I'm wrong, we can use the success of our other TIFs to help fund the setup and legal costs?
As long as they're contiguous.
Eligible, yep.
They just have to touch.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why we pay Mr. Aldridge and Mr. Klein.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, any other miscellaneous? We would be at general comments from the audience, if anyone would like to make a general comment to the board, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes. General comments are open. Go on once, twice, comments are closed. We do have an executive session, so I would ask for a motion to go into executive session for personnel five ILC, ILCS 120 slash two C1.
I move to go into executive session.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
That passes, we are going into executive session, we will return to this room, but there will be no further business conducted, we will only return to adjourn. All right, we are back in regular session, there being no further business to come before the board, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, adjourn.